Thanks, just a reminder to everybody that this meeting, as you just heard, is being recorded, so we'll post it. So it's available for residents. Ask that I'll make sure to the chat, so if anybody has any questions, they can reach out to me directly. If we get interrupted, we'll end the meeting and send out new instructions to join it, but otherwise, I think we're good to go.
And don't forget to disable the chat.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's just go through the agenda. If you want to pull it up, the old business started with stormwater ordinance, letter to builders. And this is an important discussion topic. That's why we gave it some time. We can't or we should avoid talking about the particulars of any specific building permit applications. But it's clear that the new building permit applications or building permits that are being in the pipeline do not fully comply with our stormwater regulations. So the question for us to discuss is, how do we consider that? Do we look at variances ourselves? Or do we take a holistic approach and assess how earnestly the builders attempt to comply? I don't know, do you? And then the letter to builders is to try to inform builders because at least with the first builder that is being confronted with this, it seems to be a surprise. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other thoughts to lead the discussion?
Well, well, remember, the the other aspect of this for the council to eventually make a decision on is having published guidelines, which was sort of an end result of the of the welcoming letter idea. I think I think that the town attorney was drafting something where we were looking at what other municipalities were doing.
Yeah, so I can give a just a little bit of background on that. So in terms of the letter, one of the other municipalities around us that has a stormwater ordinance is the town of Chevy Chase, and they have essentially a standalone manual that they have available for people that gives sort of a primer to any potential builders or folks that are interested in making alterations on their property that might trigger the stormwater ordinance. And just to add to quickly what you had said, Steve, I think the other thing that I was hoping we could get some clarification on tonight is what the expectations were for the staff when we bring forward any stormwater variances. And to what extent discussions about mitigation should take place prior to any variance hearing?
Certainly, I'd hope that discussions of mitigation can take place before the hearing to lower the temperature of the hearing. That certainly helped. The other the other group that can help here probably is Stormwater Committee. I mean, I got a note from a member of the Stormwater Committee about a new system that is compatible with our clay soils for capturing stormwater that is also relatively cheap to install. So in other words, they do know some things and have some resources that could be of use here. And it's possible that they could come up with a short manual or a list of mitigation devices that you could hand builders, you know, that that be away.
That would be that would be very helpful because Matt, Doug, and I had a discussion about what devices under the Maryland Design Manual would currently be available if the county were to provide a waiver based on clay soils and based on an expectation that a rain tank, for example, would not draw down in 48 hours, then the only other option we could come up with was a rain barrel, but then, you know, to cover the whole roof surface in rain barrels, you'd need a lot of these barrels. So it would definitely help to be able to identify other devices that the town would accept.
Right. Well, I do know I've said I do in all this other device, but Stormwater Committee, I think, is best informed in terms of actually coming up with these things.
So Robin, are you suggesting that I guess our our town officials communicate with a stormwater committee prior to the council? Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And maybe ask the committee to come up with guidelines for the council's review to implement the code.
Yep, but also, you know, for information for staff in discussions with the prospective builders.
One of the things that we had talked about was that I think the idea of the stormwater, I think the idea of the stormwater management, stormwater management study committee coming up with perhaps a manual that can be used as as a point of reference is a is a helpful one because what what I didn't want to happen was for for an applicant to meet with our meet with Doug and I, for example, and for us to try to come up with some recommendations. And then to go to a meeting and if if those weren't deemed sufficient by the council, then I didn't want to put the council in a bad spot that or or the applicant or or the town in general in a bad spot by an applicant saying, look, I met with your staff, I did everything your staff said, why do it? Why do I now have to do this other thing? And why wasn't that brought up before? So that was sort of my thinking on that.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the other council members. Debbie?
You're muted.
I am sorry, busy looking for my Google Docs on my iPad, and I can't find it because I'm really inept. Okay. But anyway, I like the idea of a manual for that 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 we could hand out and say, these are the rules, follow them, you know, and be really clear about it. Maybe it doesn't have to be, you know, a very huge thing, but something very readable. And just easy for even if like I want to do an addition on my house, I get the manual, take a look at it, then hand it to my builder and say, this is what we have to do kind of thing. So maybe so we all can understand. That's where I would be.
I like the idea of a manual. My only hesitation right now is the Stormwater Management Study Committee. I think is is developing further recommendations. What we what we passed in the ordinance was just like their initial recommendation.
So maybe it's not in paper, maybe it's online and it has a big asterisk or two, it says, these are being updated. So look, check back.
I think Debbie brings up a good point because, you know, I know we initially discussed this for new builds, but there's definitely houses that fall under renovations where they basically, you know, renovate all but a little corner of their existing plot or something like that to say that it's not necessarily a new build. And so how do we incorporate the stormwater management discussions with those kind of renovations as well? And then I don't know, I mean, are we able to lobby Montgomery County to say that, you know, they need to stop with their waivers and be concerned about quantity as well as quality? I mean, is that something that the Stormwater Management is working on, like a side aside project?
That's part part of their mission is one, to recommend policies and procedures for the town, and two is to recommend the advocacy of changes in policies and procedures or code of the county.
Okay.
So yes.
Yeah, so that would be helpful, too. And I would be curious as to the town of Summer or the town of Chevy Chase that has that already set up. On, you know, what they're like, how is it passed along that, you know, there if they don't take any stormwater management waivers from building permits, like, is there something that they just state upfront? Or do they let the county know that? Or, you know, how what I wonder what their process is to let builders know that they can't, you know, sidestep those.
Yeah, I think in the in the town, as Matt noted, they initially issued a guidance document that was you know, well published and worked on for at least a year. But then I think it was mostly word of mouth after adoption where contractors began to understand that it was a requirement and there, as I may have said before, that seems to be one engineering firm, CAS Engineering, that has the monopoly in that town for preparing applications. So the builders know to contact CAS and CAS knows to comply with the code.
Yeah, so they I know they did a couple houses or they did the house next door to me, and they are involved with a lot of those. So just letting them know would be probably good, too.
Yeah, good point.
I want to add something here. So the town attorney and I kind of don't agree on this, but I believe that we should be recommending to applicants that have a variance that they seek legal advice. Because one of the problems in these hearings is that the and you've seen you've seen it recently. The the applicant is represented by an architect who doesn't know, understand the law, or they're represented by their builder who who doesn't understand the law, and then they start whining and complaining about stuff. And and they're and they're not, you know, they're not doing the right service to their to their clients. And and that's why, you know, in the at the planning board, that's why most, you know, builders and developers always are represented by by an attorney. But the town attorney, and he can weigh in here, he thinks that if we recommend that that we're in we could be inviting litigation. So but it's but it's really up to you to decide, but I'll let I'll let the town attorney say his piece.
No, I would say I agree with the mayor. And my concern wouldn't be that we're inviting litigation necessarily, but that we're adding additional expense for the applicants. And because this is administrative hearing, perhaps there there should be an attempt to make it less formal so that applicants don't need the expense of counsel. But even even if
But it's but when they don't, but when they don't get counsel, they end up getting their projects delayed. And it's costing them more money anyway.
Good point.
But I mean, so the waiver situation that, you know, Montgomery County has been giving out as far as stormwater management. Those waivers don't fall into a variance in our code. So can't we just simply say that we are not accepting those waivers anymore? And I mean, isn't it really up to the applicant and the building, the builder to come up with a way around it and to offer solutions as to what they can do so that they don't require a waiver? Like, I don't know why it should be up to Matt and, you know, the attorney to give suggestions to these builders who come to talk to us first. I mean, that's their job at CAS is to figure out like what to do with this water. I mean, they're the ones that come up with it all.
But so you're right that our current code basically says that we don't accept waivers at the county level. And that was that was sort of the the simple way of getting something on the books. What's complicated is there could be instances where, as Robin alluded to, if if they if they get a soil test that says this does the soil doesn't perk. So you get a 100% waiver on your property because the soil just doesn't take any water. Then it it has nothing to do with the size of the house or anything. It essentially makes it an unbuildable property because you could put a 400 square foot shed, and you would need a 100% waiver on that shed because no devices take water.
So but maybe that means that, you know, then for that certain circumstance, you know, if they can only stay within the original footprint of the house. Here's another idea.
Or would it be allowed to do demolition and new construction at all?
Right. So I'd like to hear from Kabir, but but before I just like to make my own observation there. I know of residents who have replaced soil on their property so they could install rain gardens. Essentially, what could be done here is for your 8,000, 9,000 square foot lot, you just replace the top six feet of soil or something.
But the county doesn't accept that. So that that's that's right. That's that. And that that's sort of why this conversation is needed because the county doesn't accept that. So the county is still going to give them a waiver for it.
And there's an engineering reason Doug may want to chime in there. As I understand it, the county says you can replace the top six inches of soil, and that's great. But if you put a rain tank in that's four feet deep, then at the bottom of the rain tank, you've still got the, you know, the clay, and the water is not going to drain down in 48 hours from the rain tank as required under the Maryland Design Manual.
Right, I think you need to replace soil down much deeper than six inches. Three feet, four feet? I don't know. I'm not a soil engineer, but deep enough so that the tanks would would percolate. It would not be inexpensive, but we're talking about $2 million houses. I'm just saying it's a possibility. Kabir?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what what we are responding to. So Matt, I think your first question was, should we let builders and homeowners know that there's been a code change? So that they're aware of this because it seems that builders are not. Is that right?
Well, not necessarily, because they find out during the process, of course, but but there was there had been talk that actually we had started talking about it several years ago about some type of letter or some type of new document that we could create that would give give people sort of an understanding of our hearing process and some of the expectations surrounding that.
Okay, so but there is no on around the stormwater change, there's no question from you. Do you need to inform builders? Because I thought the agenda item was letter to builders. So I'm wanting to understand what letter to builders?
I think that that was more to I think and Jeffrey, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the idea behind that was to maybe if we had time to start in that that conversation about who we could who should be responsible for that and who might we bring in to help create a document that can help?
So it's so it is not about a letter, but a explainer manual. Okay, okay. Okay. And then specifically on the manual, it's really the mitigation approaches that could be taken given the challenges with respect to meeting our code and updated code. So, okay, I have to say, I'm at first flush, my my feeling is you know, we we may probably struggle to come up with all the mitigation efforts that are needed. And I'm not sure whether we want to be you know, identifying mitigation efforts. And I almost feel I would like to live through, and I would like us as a council, live through some series of variance hearings to get smart about what is feasible before we can sort of take a step back and say, okay, you know, we are seeing a certain pattern. We are some because, as I think Shannon mentioned, builders and homeowners might take steps on their own to try and be compliant with the code, and some of their mitigation efforts might go beyond what we come up with or could be more creative than what we come up with. And so it'd be good to to sort of see, you know, live through at least three, maybe five variance hearings before we can take a step back and then potentially provide a guide moving forward. That's I'm not necessarily emphatically advocating for that, but that's what comes to my mind right now as as a way to move forward. And then lastly, I want to remember it's a stormwater study committee. I understand that the committee members are keen for the committee to sunset after the study is done. So just as a flag, I think that if we want them to continue to play a role around stormwater issues, we may need to kind of work with them and reimagine that. And I'm sure they would, some members would be keen. But I think, you know, they wanted to end after the study, make recommendations, move on with their lives. But if they are, if we want them to play a role on an ongoing basis, we may want to think about what that looks like.
Great point. Thank you, Kabir. And great discussion. This is just really laying the groundwork for us to have more discussions and setting us up to to have some of these variance hearings, which could be contentious and should be informative. And I'm glad that we've worked through other tough stuff together. I think we'll do fine. And speaking of moving forward, let's move on to the next topic, setback exceptions. And the idea here, what I want to talk about just briefly is we have a proposed ordinance. It's it's been introduced. It's a very straightforward, somewhat draconian ordinance. Now, basically, there are no automatic exceptions to the setback rules. Not for a patio, not for a deck, not for a chimney, not for anything. And I know that in some of the conversations we've had before, council members, various council members have expressed an interest in in retaining some form of automatic exceptions for some construction. And I was hoping that we could talk about that a little bit more in this sort of open forum before we have a formal town hearing where we'll be voting on it. So if that's an intro, I know if you don't mind me, Debbie, I'll go back to you because I think, you know, who was it that was interested in like continuing to permit allow rear decks to extend into the setback? Shannon, was that you?
Um.
I can't recall.
Yeah, well, I was talking about more about like, you know, the difference between like a porch, which was, you know, on the main street level that was like welcoming for neighbors versus a balcony that looks up over the street in the front of the house. I wasn't really talking about the back of the house.
Okay, so I can. So anyhow, since we've got you here, do you have any thoughts or concerns about this straightforward ordinance on setbacks?
Well, I mean, I'd been an advocate for rear decks at one point, but then Debbie pointed out that that rear decks were intrusive, too, because people's homes behind. So I bit my tongue there. Front porch is I kind of have a fondness for because they are more community oriented if you're hanging out on your front porch. And so I've seen I'd be more willing to see an exception for that, but I didn't get a lot of interest from the council members. So I thought, okay, all right. So I mean, I've gone along then with the no exceptions standard that you raised for that reason.
Okay. I was in agreement with the front porch thing for sure. So I I side with you on that, Robin, and I think that a back deck is fine as well as long as it matches certain setback requirements. I don't know what the original setback requirements are for decks right now in the back of the house, but you know, as long as it isn't on your neighbor's fence, like, you know, or there's a certain amount of space between, I think that they might be okay. I mean, you know, my thing was more on these balconies and decks on the second floor and, you know, things like that that were more unusual, but perhaps not as unusual now, given different styles of housing that are going in.
Right. Thank you both. As a reminder, a clarification for folks, the council could still consider variance requests to extend into the setback. It's just that we would we're almost putting more burden on ourselves because I'm sure we will get more variance requests.
That's right. I wanted to clarify that, Steve, and I'm surprised to hear you use the word draconian because in reality, we are saying, we are not saying you cannot have a front porch or a back porch or a chimney or any of these design features. We're saying you can do whatever you want, but it's within a defined space. And you will need to come to us to get exceptions if you want to go beyond that defined space. And so as Ron noted last, so it's not a design statement, we you can do whatever you want, but it's within a defined space. And I think it's motivated by trying to, you know, preserve the broader green space in town. And so it's not motivated by design, at least I think that's how I understood it when it was proposed. And I think Ron's and Ron's observation from Martin's edition, if I'm not mistaken, is that it has led to smaller homes. Not less exciting and interesting homes from a design perspective, but smaller homes. So we know going into this that that is one of the impacts of this code update. The other impact is, I think you're fair, it's fair to say we will probably see attempts to, you know, propose variance to this to this code. We will see proposals come our way because there is a ongoing approach to maximize your land space. I think we see it all around us. I think homeowners want to do that. So we will see probably various hearings. Once again, I would propose we live through them, however painful. Live through at least three, five of them, and then step back and say, okay, did we screw up here? Is this gone? Is it too hard? Is it too difficult? Are we constraining too many things? And do we need to revisit this? Or that would be my, again, initial proposal. So I wouldn't characterize this as draconian, but I definitely think it is, you know, aggressive, but at the same time elegant, frankly. And and you're right that it might lead to more variance here.
We should look at the code again and the particular language within it on what are factors that weigh for are allowing a variance and factors that are against are allowing a variance much the same way as some of the other regulations are written. And because we're going to have to depend on these in in when we have these variance requests coming in, and we don't want to be using subjective standards in either supporting variances, I like front porches, therefore, I'll support front porches, that kind of thing. We do want to try to get that stuff sharp. There's a great suggestion there. Debbie, we haven't heard from you on this topic.
A couple of things. One is I agree with Robin. I would love to see it clear and easy to follow. So it isn't, I like front porches, so therefore, we're all going to have one now, but nobody's going to have, you know, an upstairs porch kind of thing. I think I had a thought when Kabir was talking that I agreed with most of what he said. But I don't think we have to live through a few variance hearings. I think we should just do it. I don't know what we're afraid of. Just do it. And set the standard, write it up. And if it doesn't work, well, then we'll change it. But I think we think it will work.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what Kabir was suggesting.
What you were saying? Okay, sorry.
I was saying to revisit it, let's wait through where it's hearings.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, because at least I personally. Yeah, because I at least I personally don't know how it will pan out. I can guess. But I'm not hundred percent sure and I want to see through that. By the way, I would flag one quick thing, as you all know. I've advocated in the past to create incentives for people to adhere to the code. I believe one incentive is that if you adhere to the code and don't have a variance hearing, you don't need to come in front of the council. Or your application is not even listed for the council. I think that could serve as an incentive. Not hundred percent sure how big of an incentive, but I suspect it will serve as an incentive and could help us minimize variance hearing overall.
I I think that's interesting. Is there any downside to doing something like that?
Yeah, what I've heard in the past was that we. You know, I think there's a culture like and and it allows when you bring, this is a big impactful thing whenever you. Build a house or you renovate your house. So it creates opportunity for residents to raise concerns, even if it is in compliance with the code. So I think that was one of the reasons we want to keep it. So we want, you know, a public hearing process where others can weigh in. That's what I heard, if I'm not mistaken.
It's mainly because that's that is the culture of not only our town, but our our county. Is that there is public engagement and and all the decision making, especially with these applications. And I think that if you, and and we've discussed this before, council member. Um, Kumar, if you if you propose that change, I think that the that the citizens and the residents would. Violently oppose it.
I don't know about that, you know, um.
Violently?
You know what? Do something. We could do something where we said that if if nobody wants, if no, if no. Uh, resident wants to have a public hearing to voice their concerns about your property, well, then it passes. You know, why waste our time?
Well, let's park this for for a future work session, but it's the broader point that we probably should look at. In incentivizing.
Okay.
This may not be the right answer, but I think we should look at incentivizing uh adherence to the code.
It's parked.
One quick question, Steve, before we move on. I know, I know we're um, trying to adhere to the schedules. And Ron, um, I apologize if this is catching you off guard because I don't think I flagged it for you ahead of time. But one, would this code change affect the way that setbacks are measured? In other words, do now setbacks start at the front of porches? So we would actually, we may not actually see that big of a difference from where a house is building. Because the instance, um, you know, I'm I'm thinking about, you know, Jeff Jeff Lapes' property that we saw. His setback was pushed back to something like thirty feet, whereas if we're measuring from front porches. He would actually be at the twenty-five foot default. And so in order to put his, in order to put his front porch on, he would start it from the same same place ostensibly.
Yeah, that that's right. Setbacks are measured to the wall. So if, you know, if someone were to maximize their permissible buildable envelope, they would build a box-like structure. With no porch, but if they want the porch, then as you said, they got to set their house back a little bit to fit the porch into that buildable envelope.
But does the porch now become the measurement point for setbacks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
On on both, you know, on 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 both the building ends, but also the meas- the measuring end.
And and decks, vague windows, any other projection except for the cornices and eaves, the roof. Thank you for that clarification. Like to move on to the next topic, pickleball. That's true, has the update. Is that you, Matt?
Yes, I'll I think I can be relatively brief on this. Um, I I had given. So I I I presented you an updated um, cost for it. And built in a little bit of contingency there. Um, I've I've met with Bruce Charandoff, who's actually with us um, in the bullpen. In case uh, anybody has any questions for Bruce. But um, met with a couple of different folks that have the capability of resurfacing. And putting lines down uh, for a pickleball court. We've met over at the basketball court here. Think at this point, the plan would be to remove the hoops. Uh, during this pilot program to avoid conflict between the two sports at the same time. Um, we did a measurement to put in two pickleball courts. I know before we had talked about, well, can we? Kind of jerry-rig still a three-point line there on one end and. As we did the measurements and visualized it right there, the second court would actually extend a little bit even into the three-point line. And um, I think in this instance, it might, the best way to uh, avoid a conflict. Is just to eliminate the the possibility of a conflict. One thing to note is that um, the company that puts in the lines and the surfaces. Did, they said that our court is in pretty good shape. Actually, there are a couple of areas where that you're seeing a little bit of the start of spider cracks. Where they suspected maybe tree roots had started to grow up. That wouldn't be a prohibitive problem for the pilot program. But assuming it's successful, the next step, they would, they would suggest that we we grind that down. And create a a really flat surface right there. Um, one of the companies, ATC Corp. Is um, the contractor with Montgomery County. So we actually could get a pretty decent deal. With them in comparison to some of some of the other contractors who do that work. But that would really be a conversation for a later time and um, for for budget discussions. But at the moment, we'd be looking at a pilot program there, set up two courts. We're we're going to invest in. Nets that are uh. Nets that are um. Move movable, but um, that that anchor down pretty well um, and are kind of on the hot, the higher end. So that they'll 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 last. One of the things Bruce had suggested is rakes and squeegees to make sure that leaves can be brushed off and water brushed off. Um, in in case uh, that becomes an issue. And um. And that's, that's really it. It's, it was interesting talking to to the folks and and the. Both of them said that they they felt that pickleball was was here to stay. It's not a flash in the pan. And so they've seen a lot of movement towards it um, and and expected that uh, we would get a lot of use out of it.
Thank you, Matt. My my only question about the spreadsheet is. I thought we were talking about a pilot with two courts, but it looks like the totals are for three courts.
Yeah, that was sort of the the um, the contingency I was building in there. So we, it, my guess is we would be able to come in under budget on it. But I I wanted, just in case the pricing and shipping of some of these is, you know, goes up or is an added cost that we haven't quite factored in. Or if uh, you know, a kid kicks a soccer ball into one of the nets and breaks it. So that we, we could, you know, purchase a replacement one, um, thi- things like that. So that was, that was sort of my thinking behind that.
Okay, thank you. Kabir, what what are your thoughts on pickleball?
I think this looks good. Uh, Matt, thanks for, you know, baking in a contingency. One clarification, there will be some storage device to put everything in and blah, 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 you know, a system around that.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so we haven't quite ironed out all the details of how that will be communicated. But yeah, that that's one of the pieces of equipment that we've priced out and built into the other miscellaneous costs there.
And I think we've surfaced two things, right? The will people miss the basketball courts and the other is the noise. And so maybe, I don't know when we plan to pick off the pilot, but maybe a month into that, we should. Either at a council session or a separate hearing, just plan to hear from the town. On at least those two issues. So we are, you know, we're not, we are proactively soliciting that.
Yeah, and that that was part of my thinking too on the the hoops is, you know, we can easily just take down the the physical. Round circular hoops and put those back up. If if it turns out people aren't using pickleball, people really miss basketball there. Um, before we really, you know, take, take the hoops out and and re uh, repave over that or whatever.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just sort of going around in different order, Debbie?
Oh, I think this is great. I think uh, people have been crying out for this and um, my only worry is that. You know, um, is our storage locker going to be locked? Is it going to have a combination? So these things don't walk away because this is the kind of stuff, the brooms and the squeegees and whatever that can walk. And the nets, are they in a way going to be stationed on so people can't steal them? People that are angry that there are no more hoops to play basketball, for instance?
Yes, we we we've discussed some o- options for that. Um, there, there might be a little bit of trial and error to to kind of get it right. Um, but I think what we're, what we're looking at is getting some U-line locks um, so that. We could at the end of the evening lock, lock that to the the gate there or the uh, the fence there.
Okay. Sounds good.
Shannon?
Um, so sorry if I missed this, but how long is the pilot program for?
Good question. I was guessing it's for a year, but I don't know. Matt?
Well, that's something that uh, I I think, I think the idea was six months. Um, I think that's what Bruce was recommending so that we can build into next year's budget. Um, but we're. Yeah, I think I think the idea was six, either six months or a year. I mean. I think the idea would be if if we can get it started in March as we want, then six months would allow us. To then see, you know, in September, we'd we'd have enough time to be able to schedule to get the full court up. But before winter. If it takes a little bit longer to to get a contractor in to paint the lines, then um. Probably, you know, it'll it'll last till winter anyway and we'd, we'd have to wait until next spring to to then get that work done.
And then do, I mean, do the residents know if that this basketball court will be going away?
I don't think that that's, that's been uh. Circulated um, as as much as, as much as probably we want to before we make, we make that decision. And um, you know, move ahead with it.
So as as a, like as the process goes through, is this, is pickleball still going to be going through a town council meeting? And a vote in order to approve the pilot?
Yes. Hasn't the pilot already, the pilot's already been approved, right?
No, the, so we talked about a pilot at last month's work session. And the feedback was, let's, let's um, let's massage this a little bit. So we have better numbers to look at. That's what we brought here today. And then the idea is, um, you know, one of the questions that. Uh, I, now I can't remember who had asked, asked about it, but uh, when, when the. The work can be done for the lines on the courts, um, that's one of the things that I'll, I'll find out ahead of upcoming council meeting.
Okay, so given that the group, the advocates were desirous that this pilot take place in March. Starting in, was it March or May?
March.
Okay, so that means that. And and the purpose today is, is the council gonna uh, move forward with placing? The the proposal on the agenda for February. So Councilor Robex's question is very relevant. I think that was the purpose of this agenda item tonight. So, so I'll turn it back.
So if we can get this on the agenda for the, for the town council meeting for February. Because I think that it would be important for the residents to understand that, you know, number one, the pickleball court, I mean, the basketball court. Will be going away for a period of time. Um, and, you know, just understand that that is all happening. Because I don't know that everyone is aware of that right now.
Yeah. Okay, um, yeah, I I I think, uh, are you thinking maybe uh, assuming we move forward? And move to take a vote in at the February meeting that I could work with Bruce to write up. You know, an announcement that goes to the town that explains what that discussion item will be at the meeting and what that entails. And kind of what the ramifications would be.
Yeah, I think that that would be helpful, just so everyone's aware, you know, because I I didn't know if everyone was aware. And then the other part that I will say for living on the street with the construction and all the stuff is, you know, when we do put something together. If it goes through that, we recommend that people use parking at the tennis court.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so, so ordinarily. At this time, a request would be made. To, for someone to write an article for the Town Journal. The Town Journal has already been put to bed for this month. So the alternative to that, of course, is to have the town manager um. Weekly write in his column, you know, the information about the uh, the proposal that will be on the February agenda. So, so is the council. Based on all this excellent input that you've all given today, are you, are you desirous that we place this item? On the February agenda?
Very desirous.
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, and the last person we haven't heard from is Robin. I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
But I mean, the costs are modest for the pilot. I think it was seven thousand dollars. We need to make sure that that. Whichever, whoever is going to put that into the budget, puts it into the budget, you know. Um, the the issue is the, either the following year or the year after, the courts are going to have to be resurfaced sometime soon. And that isn't just pickleball. The courts are going to have to be resurfaced. That's in the spreadsheet. So there are costs down the line and probably that should go into our budget as well.
Yes. Thank you. Your, your experience on the budget committee shines through. Okay, um, speaking of which, procurement policy, six fifty, and we're just almost on time. Uh, Matt, can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, I I can be sort of brief on that and then just take any questions. But um, I've worked with Ron, the Environment Committee and um, Equity and Inclusion Committee. In particular, to help put together a short document that's drawn from some of our neighboring municipalities. I also reached out to MML for uh, various um, policy documents throughout the state. Um, that establishes a threshold um, by which certain, uh, that triggers certain criteria. Um, for posting uh, posting uh. RFPs and 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 ja- and positions with the town, as well as um, some selection and evaluation criteria. Um, one of the things that we're adding, which um, is relevant to a topic that we have later on tonight. Is the use of um, green technology and and environmentally responsible um, equipments and practices. Another is um, you know, promoting social equity, yeah. In in terms of minority-owned, women-owned, um, disability-owned, et cetera. Um, and workplace diversity. Um, and then just a list of some. Um, some exceptions uh, that might come up that uh, Ron helped me put together legally. You know, if if um, you know, we just talked about an opportunity to piggyback with the county. Um, which we know is going to be cheaper than some of the other uh, potential bidders. Or if they're sole source, or we just went out to bid, um, or and then if there's an emergency, for example. Um, so I I think that hopefully covers it at a, at a ten thousand foot level. But otherwise happy to, happy to get some. Um, so I, I think that hopefully covers it at a, at a ten thousand foot level, but otherwise happy to, happy to get some questions and answer them.
Wha- what's the timeline, Matt?
So so this would be um approved by resolution. Is that, correct me if I'm wrong, right, Ron? So, so a resolution technically um can be introduced and adopted on, on the same meeting. So it could go on the February meeting and be adopted right there and be, and, and then go into effect.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's, let's go around for folks to ask questions. Uh, Kabir, I don't know if we've started with you yet. I can't recall. Do you have any questions?
You, you, you have started with me al- already, so maybe we go with Robin, we go with Robin.
Robin?
All right, Matt. It, it, I mean, it looks good, but let me just give you an example to work through the you were referring indirectly to the recommendation on the use of salt for uh snow treatment. And is there any, now any need for a separate recommendation around salt since it's sustainable practice is, in fact, what we're looking for in the, in our procurement policy and the use of salt is not a sustainable practice?
Yeah, the way I, the way I envision that is when we create the RFP itself, we make a note that the town gives preference to uh environmentally sustainable or environmentally responsible practices. Um, I know, for example, with that salt, uh, a, a brine solution can be used, at least on the roads. Um, and so when we talk to, when we talk to bidders, I, I think that would be part of the discussion. Um, I think I, what I didn't include here um is a uh calculation or a, a percentage that might be um given to each different evaluation points. Um, so that, that could be something we add or, you know, a next
I think we're going to leave that for the RFP. I don't think
Right. But I don't, I don't know if that answers your question. Uh
No, it does.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh Shannon, do you have any questions?
No questions. No.
No? Debbie, questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I just wondered, Matt, does this, is this procurement policy, does it make it more cumbersome for you to do your job?
No, it actually, it actually is helpful because it gives clarity on when we should specifically go out to bid versus when we can just pluck somebody. And um, it, I, I think that it's, it also enumerates certain expectations that some people already have in town and that I think have general consensus that, you know, things like social equity practices and environmentally conscious practices. So I don't think it adds, adds any real administrative burden. It, it's just enumerating um and clarifying when we should go through a, a specific process.
Okay. Good.
Hey, Kabir? Finally.
Matt, I think it's excellent. Thank you for uh, you know, sticking with this and uh bringing it along. We, we saw a previous draft, I think in the fall earlier, so thanks, thanks for doing this. I have just two questions. How did you come up with the fifteen thousand dollar threshold? Um, maybe that was based on sort of neighboring towns and so on. And the other is the you said this applies to both, you know, good services and unemployment. And I was wondering if that was standard practice to come to the council for those kinds of employment decisions? Um, or were you thinking of like consultants when you meant employment, but that would have been in goods and services? So those two things, just quick clarification, you know, probably would be helpful.
Yeah, so the do- the dollar amount is based off of Maryland state law. So it's some, it's some, that's the trigger where you have to go, you're supposed to go to um the e-Maryland procurement website anyway. So that, that's where that number came from.
Got it.
And in terms of employment, yeah, you know, I, I did sort of go back and forth on this one. I guess why I, why I landed on that was because there might be an example where um I, I thought, I, I guess I, I was thinking if if the staffing was increased in a way that it was sort of a, a collegial process that we've, we've embraced and, and something the council might want to have um in, in, input on.
Yeah, I would love to hear what council members think about that. Personally, not sure. I would, I mean, to Debbie's question on employment, I would want you to have sort of discussion. You, you know, and I don't know if you need to come to us for any contract or any employment of about four, fifteen thousand dollars. I, I wasn't sure if that would be a good use of time, or they would slow down, slow down the process, it might you know, create more bottlenecks. I think in the budget planning, we, we might say, hey, you know, these roles need to be filled. This is the budget for the roles, and then you go ahead and hire them. You and Jeffrey work together to do that, and I don't know if we need to weigh in each time you, you hire. And, and maybe we can agree on, I'm sure there is some general guidance on, on hiring in keeping with the, the sort of ethos on equity and so on. Um, so that's the only thing I would raise. Otherwise, I think this is great, and I would advocate to put it on the fab agenda.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess my, my only other uh response is that I, I think at a certain point, um it would make sense that the council at least establish that it's a budgeted position that we can, we can pay for. Um, and so that
We, that we have to do, and I would put that, and Robin can correct, correct us as, as part of the budget process as part of your proposal to us. You know, I think that's, that's where I would want us to weigh in at the high level, what that structure looks like. But the individual hiring decisions, hiring by committee, I don't know.
Okay, so I have a couple of things to say here. First of all, remember, we're going from nothing to a policy. And so, so my recommendation is that we just start with this base, as a baseline. And then as we move forward, we're going to, you know, the, the council's going to have to amend it because it, it's almost
Agreed.
Yeah, okay. But then the other thing I want to say is to your point, um uh, Councilmember Kumar, because Matt and I talked about this in terms of the, the hiring. So I think that in general, it should be, you know, the, the, the mayor recommends and the council approves Matt's position. And then as part of his job description, he is empowered to hire everybody. But there are certain positions that, that you, that we might want to uh require council approval, such as if, because Matt is thinking about creating a director of public works. And in most municipalities, little, I mean, even little ones like ours in Maryland, I think that the um the council does approve that. In many cases, the council does approve that position. So, so that's something to think about for the future, and maybe the town attorney can weigh here.
I was just going to say, um, one, one other point, just very quickly is, ma- and maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong, and we realize that I stepped in something, but the way I was envisioning this was that for any, for any staff role, a- above fifteen thousand dollars, it basically just meant that the council has to establish it and budget for it, and then it establishes where we where we're going to advertise the, this position so that it's fairly advertised and we're, we're ensuring that we get a, a, a good um selection of possible um folks, folks for it.
To Mayor Slaven's point, I think that probably does not belong in the procurement policy, but just move, let's move forward with this.
Okay.
Well, we, well, also, I don't, I don't think we really have a, any kind of hiring policy. We, you know, we have a personnel manual, which I forget the status of now, but I think it needs to be updated.
Okay, so that's, that's where we tackled this.
But those are all, but those are all, those are all really good questions that you, that you bring up. Councilmember Kumar.
All right, I think everyone's, thank you very much. Good discussion. I, I'd like to emphasize what the mayor has mentioned, that this will be a first for Somerset to have a procurement policy. And as with the other things, we can we can develop lessons learned and improve it in the future, but I think it's great stuff. A pool opening. There's a request from the pool committee to open the pool to start the pool season considerably earlier uh than last year on April first. So I don't know if this is something that um Debbie, you'd be introducing or talking about, or the town manager?
Oh, town manager, maybe. Maybe the town manager wants to introduce it, I don't know.
I defer to you, council member.
Thank you. Um, no, the, the pool committee had, had, had sent, you know, like six recommendations. I don't know if, maybe it's, yeah, at least uh, like five recommendations and uh for for money, you know, in terms of, you know, getting a consultant to check out our pool and so on, you know, check out, should we can we go all year long? But if you want to talk now just about opening and closing, then the pool committee has asked that the pool that we consider, I put aside money, to um open the pool in April. And I know uh their intention is to keep it open through October. Now, we got the, we got the usage numbers from, from Matt. And Shannon being, Shannon being the weirdest kid that she is, was able to uh, to uh actually take the data and, and so we could analyze it, and she has analyzed it. Do you all, do you all have that?
Yes.
I was going to share it on the screen if people wanted to look at it.
Is this an appropriate time to talk about the usage before we dive into the opening and closing? And I think it will help base our conversation.
I had one clarification.
Yes.
Uh, you mentioned there the committee's recommendations. Uh, and if I remember, Matt, all, one of them has a budget implication for this fiscal year. That's the April
Right.
reopening. All the others have budget implication for the next fiscal year.
Right.
So technically, we, we can punt the others.
Okay, fine.
We have the budget conversation, but the April one, we kind of need to sort out in advance of Matt telling American Pool, blah, blah, blah.
Good, good point.
Yeah, okay.
That's a really good point. I didn't think of that, um, because I haven't been through this budgets thing yet, so um, you know
Exactly. So we, we may, we don't need, you know, like if you're going down the path of, let's not do October.
Okay, that makes
We can do that as part of the next budget cycle.
Okay, that makes tonight much easier. So the pool committee would like us to open the pool at, you know, April first. And um, so, you know, our Matt, Matt Trolinger, sent us the what it would cost to do that, okay? So I think you've all seen that. And um, so now we know what the costs are to do this. Now I'd like, Shannon, would you share your page and we can talk about the um, you know, the recent, you know, the data that can help us talk about, should we open in April or not?
Yep, can you guys see my um screen?
Not yet. I see something, but I don't see, yeah, here we are. Yeah, I see it.
Okay, well, and I mean, I think this does play into the October as well, because it would be it would be great to set it up if we can, you know, or at least, you know, have a all-encompassing discussion about when the pool should be open because you know, I felt like this whole past summer, it was like every two minutes, we were talking about keeping it open longer and longer. Um, and so it would be nice to just set it up, but before that is concerned, I will walk through this data very quickly. So what we found from the pool from summer twenty twenty-one, so three hundred and thirty-one accounts use the pool, and an account can be really kind of looked at as a household. Now, does every household equal one account? You know, there could be some houses that rent out a space and someone else has another account, you know, I'm not exactly sure. But from the data that we have, um, the accounts is representative, we'll call them households. And then they use the pool for ten thousand eight hundred and ninety instances. So what that means is if you are an account like my husband and me and my daughter are account number fourteen, I think. And so they count every single time that we go to the pool as one instance. So if my daughter goes to the pool three times in one day, she's counted as three instances. If we join her three times in one day, we're counted as that as well. If we bring a guest with her, it's counted as an instance. So this includes guests as well. Does anyone have questions on that? On what these mean? No?
So one, one account can have many instances.
Yes, yes.
That's why the number is so lo- large. That's why, you know, three hundred and thirty-one accounts, but there's ten thousand eight hundred and ninety instances or visits, okay?
Yeah, and so, and so here are the stats by month. So in May, a hundred and sixty-nine accounts went um for sixteen forty-six instances. In June, we had two thirty-nine for twenty-six twenty-four. July had the exa- exact same amount of accounts. However, you know, we were closed for about a week for the maintenance that was unexpected in July. So these instances would have been going up. August um actually did not drop in accounts that much. I know August has been primarily deemed a slower month, but there were two hundred and thirty-three accounts that used it for nineteen twelve instances. September dropped to one ninety-seven and eighteen sixty-four instances, and then the big drop was October with just a hundred and twenty-one accounts for seven hundred and forty-six instances, which was down sixty percent for usage from September. Now, we'll note that, like, if you look at the different accounts and like who uses the pool, there are heavy users, obviously, and there are light users. Forty percent of accounts, so a hundred and thirty-two households, use the pool less than ten ti- ten instances. So, you know, one person goes, that's one instance. The whole family goes, and they're a family of four, it's four instances. And then thirty-three accounts account for forty percent of the total pool usage. Um the stats by day, I was shocked. I did not think Sunday was going to be the highest usage day. It is. Sunday followed by Saturday. Surprisingly, Friday was lighter than I imagined um as, right here. The top fifteen dates with the highest attendance, so you see them here, the Saturday, August twenty-eighth, was a food cart event um at the pool. Uh, other dates that were highlighted here, I looked at, there's a couple of them that um were food cart events, so that definitely draws people to the pool as we talked about and discussed. Um, and then also for, it, it wasn't a top fifteen date, but the newcomers party in October drew heavy instances to the pool um for that date as well. And then the top fifteen dates with the lowest attendance, um, you can see, so like, you know, Thursday, October twenty-eighth, there were just fourteen instances. So, you know, presumably fourteen people are, you know, were at the pool going down to um, you know, these times here. This July twelfth was when the pool was closed, that doesn't really count. And then July ninth was when the pool was closed as well, so that doesn't really count. Um, so you can see that is the breakdown of the data. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much, Shannon. Yep.
Steve, no, go ahead, Steve.
I was going to ask Matt for s- maybe some amplification on his cost data. I see a column for October and a column for September, and then a blank column.
Steve, before we move on to the cost, just if you keep that up, Shannon. Thank you, by the way. Thank you for doing that, by the way. It's super, super helpful. I, I feel, i- i- if it's okay with you, Steve, just quick, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to just kind of think out loud with all of you what this means. So, one, I think it sort of, you know, I think validates right your, your view, Shannon and Debbie, that there's a tapering off that in October, starting in October, there seems to be a tapering off, at least if you go by last year's data. I think there's also, uh, if I was to draw another takeaway of this, I, I appreciate you saying August twenty-eighth was food truck. I think there's also, if I was to draw another takeaway of this, I appreciate you saying August 28th was food truck. You know, as you know, I, I feel like the pool is one, one of our true community gathering spots. And so having it open creates opportunities for other stuff, food truck stuff, those new stuff that happened last year, so it's kind of nice to see that actually drew people together, because these instances are actually people coming together, frankly. And then the third thing is that there are 331 of towns, so that's pretty much the vast majority of residents in town, so that's fantastic, because they are.
Give me one second, Kabir, isn't, don't we have over 400, don't we have about another 100?
415, I think, total doors, if I'm not mistaken. Jeffrey, is that correct?
I think it's 412 to be exact.
412, doors, you know, and, and so, so that comes pretty close to the vast majority, and that's great to see, you know, and, and and I'm, I'm pleased to see that, because I didn't have that perspective at least. So, just wanted to, these are quick reactions on, on this data, and appreciate you, you pulling together, it kind of validates, I think, some of the things we've been throwing around in this group as, as, as assumptions about what's happening at the pool.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, I, I, I don't know, I, I, if we're gonna look at it holistically as like the pool should be open from X time to X time, like, I don't know if there is ever a possibility to look at extending the pool with weekends only, and, you know, if this is something that we have to establish with the pool company upfront, like, you know, starting in mid-September or wherever it is, we move to a Wednesday through Sunday or Thursday through Sunday, and what the cost ramifications are, you know, from doing something like that. But to your point, you know, you will notice, and again, I didn't highlight them, but there's at least three other food truck events that happen in some of these top dates that the pool had the heaviest usage. And so if we were to structure, you know, if we're able to do it where we can prohibit costs a little bit and stay open, to your point Kabir, I think that, and have some events, I mean, it is a great community, you know, place for gathering as we saw, you know, for the newcomers event, we had a big turnout. And, you know, that's reflective in this, in the stats that we show for usage.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
To that, I, I can speak to the cost thing on week, if we kept it open, weekends are just partial week. And American Pools had told us that, and Matt, you, maybe you can, can confirm this, that it wouldn't save us much money, because they have to be there almost daily, or maybe it is daily to, to do the, the, the levels in the pool and to do the maintenance things that have to happen to keep the pool healthy. And so, they said it wasn't going to save us much money to cut us down.
And I don't know who does the staffing then, or, you know, or do they do the staffing? Because it certainly will cut down on hours that some, you know, lifeguards and people have to sit there watching over the pool.
No, I, 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 I get that, but their point to Matt Zafft was, it was not going to save us much money by virtue of having to be there every day. So.
Could I come into the conversation here, just to make correction, which is that the pool committee recommendation actually is to stay open until November the 27th. In other words, stay open through November. And the budget they're requesting is for November, they're assuming that we have money in our budget for October, in our planning. And yes, they, they, they're asking for us to start on April 1st. So, the, the extra request is for the month of April and for the month of November.
Robin, you might know best, but is there, is the money in the budget for October for next year? Because we had to do as, well, I was, I, I guess I wasn't, was I on the council then? We, we had to give, put in money to do October this year, so I don't know that it's in the budget for next year.
But we, we haven't actually planned the budget, we haven't set the budget out for next year yet, which is the effort that we'll be doing very soon.
Right, so essentially, we're, we're talking about two extra months, you know, yes, in one, one fiscal year and one in the other fiscal year.
Before we go down that part, and I think Steve, you're gonna shift us to the budget for April. Just, I appreciate those Shannon's sort of broader framing, that we probably want to ground our thinking in, in these kinds of numbers, and I, I at least personally appreciate that. So, if we are trying to think about a way to kind of balance creating a sense of community and, you know, minimize costs, I appreciate the thinking that informed by these numbers, you cluster the opening around, around weekends, even if it's minimal savings, staff time. It's probably money worth considering, but I suspect this becomes part of our budget discussions for the next year, and maybe we focus on the April 1st. Now, that's where you are taking us, Steve.
Okay, I'm glad everyone's had a chance to, to come and look at this, and I'll just reiterate my thanks to, to Shannon for combing through the data that she got from Matt, to present it in a very useful breakdown. I was hoping we could shift, well, sorry, before we shift over to the, to the money, I, I wanted to ask Debbie a question from the pool committee perspective. What is, does the pool committee give a particular rationale for requesting an early opening and an extended season? Or they're, they're just.
They want it open.
We've heard about COVID in the past, this is another, this is a much longer season.
You know, i- in the conversation, COVID did not come up. It was that we, that, that people in this town like to swim, and so we should keep it open. And, you know, it sounds good, you know, if we have unlimited funds, it sounds great, but, you know, a personal opinion is that in April it's gonna be too cold, and we're not, we're gonna have, when we do the numbers next year, we're gonna have those little numbers again, you know, like we're looking at for some of October.
Right, if you look at the taper, okay, but, th- thank you very much. I'd, I'd like to talk about the numbers. Matt, that, the table that was provided has a column for October and a column for September, and then a blank column, I guess is, is it the, the total of October and September?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't label very well, so I.
Can we, can we put up, sorry to interrupt Matt, could we put up the, the numbers as well? The budget you came up with, is it possible to do that?
Yep, I can do that, just give me one second here to.
Um, also, just so you guys know, I just pulled up average temperature. And, so, just so everyone knows, April, the average temperature in Chevy Chase, Maryland is the high is 69 and the low is 43. To be matched pretty much with October, where the high is 69 and the low is 46. So April and October are essentially the same as far as average temperatures. And then May is 77, and then it goes 85, 89, 87, down to 81, so, if anyone's curious.
We have November there, Shannon?
Um, November is 58.
Yeah, so, so, the reason I used October and September as, I, I essentially used them as stand-ins for, because this, this request is essentially opening up the month of April and then most of the month of, of May. And so, I used October as the stand-in for what the cost would be for April and then September for May, they're, you know, they're not perfect, but relatively close. So the management, the management fees was the, the total quote from American Pool for their management and administration of the pool. And then it's the two month, you know, the two monthly bills for these utilities that are associated with it. I figured other costs such as, you know, hiring an electrician to come in and check things, et cetera, et cetera, is gonna happen anyway, so it's a wash whether we open in April, May, or, or whenever.
Okay, thank, thank for that clarification, Matt. For, for the council's benefit, I guess, or further clarification. I know I've heard people talk about how this is, the proposal is to open a month early, but the proposal is actually to open about seven weeks early. Because the, the budget, in the prior history of the town, prior to, in the history of the town with the pool, ever since I've been here, except for these last couple of years with COVID, is the town pool opens one week prior to Memorial Day weekend. Now we're talking about opening on April 1st, which is more than a month earlier. So, so that's why the estimate is over $50,000.
Right, yes, yeah, thank you for that clarification, Steve.
Okay. So, all, I'll, I'll, I'll share my, share my comments, then we can go around. I don't think that the numbers in the, the, I don't think that the attendance numbers indicate that there is significant town interest in, in opening on April 1st. And I'm very concerned about these, the budget implications when we have, in, in our current budget, where we're, we're running a deficit right now. So it just seemed irresponsible. Those are my thoughts. Let's, I don't, I don't know, who, who wants to jump in there?
I'll, I'll jump in, because I don't have much to say, because I agree with everything you just said. Okay, I think it'd be irresponsible for us to, to open the pool at these times. So, um, that's, I, I just, I can just say ditto what Steve said.
I would like to add that I completely agree with the, the observations of Kabir and Shannon, that the pool is a, a meeting place for the town. There are occasions, it's a great asset for the town. So my reluctance to open early is not a, any sort of indication that I don't like the pool, or I don't think it's important, it's just, I don't think it makes sense to open it on April 1st, and the request is April 1st.
You know, I would like to add, the reason I live in this neighborhood is because of the pool. I moved here for the pool, so I too love this pool and would swim in it every day I could, but.
Okay, um, thank you. Robin, do you have some?
Yeah. This, this, this is actually a very big request generally, now, I know that this year we're only considering the April opening, but you got, and if you look at it on a permanent basis, what the request is actually going is from a pool that was open five months a year to a pool that's open eight months a year. And that's a 60% increase in costs. And that, that, that has to be talked about in general terms, even as we're discussing attendance, I believe. Uh, the, the, clearly attendance did drop in October, but at the same time, there was value in the pool being open in October for the community that was apparent when the food trucks were there. So, I see some additional advantage there. I find it difficult to argue for November, I really do. April, it, it is somewhat warmer than November, and there might be some usage there, but I, I, with, we've got to find the money for these things. That's, that's, that's really the issue.
Right. Thank you, Robin, Kabir?
Just to clarify, this is, the total is 51K, right, Matt? If we open April 1st, we would have to reappropriate 51K towards this on the current budget.
That's right, and, and just for some context to that number, we do add a contingency into our operating budget of $50,000, but that covers all contingencies, so this would require a budget amendment to add $50,000 to, to the budget this year.
Okay, so be, beyond the contingency number that we have right now.
Correct.
Which is unused, correct, or is used?
Is, well, we haven't got the bills for the, the snowfall yet, so I, I can't say for certain how much of it has been used.
And our snow season is not over yet.
And snow, and snow season is not over yet.
And it, and it's an aggressive snow season.
Yes, um, but it, it, it is not entirely used up, to answer your question.
And I think we are discussing whether we want this on the agenda, right, to, to decide for the upcoming February meeting, and my view is, you know, this is a recommendation from the pool committee. This is a resource that is widely used by our town. I think it's, as I've mentioned many times, a fun, Steve, I appreciate your remarks that there's indeed a community's gathering place in a center. So I'm always inclined to find a way to give residents an opportunity to gather. And so I don't know what the exact answer is, clearly we don't have the money, because we don't have it in our contingency. But if there is a way to meet the pool committee less than halfway even, perhaps that would, you know, go a long way in, you know, both meeting their needs, but also, you know, continuing to, to emphasize the, the value of this resource for our town. So, that would be my inclination, and I don't have any specifics, like this state or this dollar amount. But if we can create more time and space for residents to gather, I would always work in favor of that.
Okay, thank you, Kabir, and I think you make an excellent point, Kabir, that this is a recommendation from a town committee, and our, our general practice or best practice is to formally consider all recommendations. Even, even if we know that, or we anticipate that we're gonna vote against it, it's, it's appropriate to bring it up in the town forum and get more input, and maybe votes will change. Sure, thank you.
Well, well, one thing, so, one thing you might want to consider is, given that, again, that the journal has been put to bed, that perhaps you could schedule this decision for the March meeting, so that you would have the opportunity to widely publicize the proposal and see, and then you would maximize the feedback from the residents, because, you know, while, while I understand the excellent arguments that council member Heller and council member Rebek are making about use, don't forget that, that old saying about if you build it, they will come. So it is possible that that if the idea is communicated to the residents, that maybe they're all gonna say, yes, I'm gonna definitely come. I mean, that's the purpose of, you know, public decision-making, with all due respect.
Yep.
So I think if, and I, I, is that enough time to make the decision in March in terms of engaging with the, with the management company, with the management company?
I suspect.
And also, and, and also that said, well, yes, build it, they will come, maybe you, you generate a lot of support, but you might also get lots of residents saying, don't spend the money on that, spend the money on something else.
Right.
Well, I guess that, I guess I'm a little confused, because do we, I mean, even if it were to go to a town vote or, you know, a, a town council meeting. Yeah, a council vote, do we have this money?
Well, that's, you would have to.
I mean, I, I, I feel like it's, it's silly to put it to a vote if we don't have the budget for it.
Well, that's.
Yeah, it's a good point.
So, so usually, remember, usually what happens, you know, is that when there's a proposal for, to add an item that isn't budgeted for, then the staff is asked to identify where the funds would come. Now, I think the town manager answered the question that right now, if you were gonna vote for this in February, I'm not sure, you know, at the same. I'm not sure, you know, at the same time you vote for it, you have to then transfer the money. Isn't that correct, Mr. Town Attorney? So as of right now. I believe, and I don't want to speak for him, but apparently there would be, there would be no place to transfer it from.
It, um, maybe I could say something. We probably will have our February, February allocation from the state by the time of our March meeting, Matt. Is that your sense too?
Yeah, I mean, usually it comes in the very last day or, or so of the, of the month. So I, I would suspect that's the case.
Oh, I mean, we, we, we are in a much better place to estimate what our final budget for the year is once the February allocation comes in. And that's one thing, uh. The other point is that, uh, what I would ask for, for March is get two estimates, one for an April opening, April one opening and the other for May first opening and. We may be able to afford a May first opening, but not a April first opening, which is why I'm saying to get two estimates.
I agree with that. And that's, that's what I wanted to say in response to Shannon's observation that. We can say no to this proposal, but we might say, look, there is money to do one more week, two more weeks, whatever it is, you know, and. So we are trying to meet the committee's recommendations as best as possible by being.
But you might want to spend that money on pickleball, which also isn't, uh, budgeted.
Exactly, exactly. We might, exactly. So that's why we bring it to work. We surface all our.
A bit of a war between pickleball players and swimmers. I don't know where we'd go.
Yeah, exactly. Let's not just oppose the two of them in any future discussions ever again.
A war on the leisure sports.
You know, can, can I just, just take us back to the numbers for a minute? And that is, if the usage in the pool. Was, was really dramatically different in October and we assume it would be similar for April. Um, I think that's an important part of the conversation, not just can we afford it? You know, I would love to give every committee what they want. And I'm on the pool committee, you know, I used to chair the pool committee, you know, I, um, you know, I, I, I'm certainly, you know. I would love it to be open in April, but. Realistically, in terms of us doing our jobs, shouldn't we be looking at those numbers? I think they, they really matter. And maybe something for us to chew on, but I think we need to think about that.
You know, then this would be the discussion right in March. And to that, quick responses, I think that's what. Mayor Slavin was intimating. And that's reflected in the people showing up and there's an event like a food truck event. Is that if we create an opportunity, we provide the space, if events take place. Usage will up there.
I will say that there were, um, a couple food truck events, October seventeenth and October thirtieth that were not well attended. I mean, were they better attended than the, the food? Or, you know. There was.
Food truck days that week or something. Yeah.
Right, right. So, um, you know, it's, it's hard to say, um.
I think that's significant, Shannon. You had two days in a cold month when we had a food truck and people didn't come. As compared to the other days when it was nice weather, when people want to be outside gathering. You know, so anyway, it's just something to chew on and I think it's our, it comes upon us and what our responsibility, our fiscal responsibility is to the town. And to how we, if we have data, we should use it. We're lucky to have it.
Yeah, so I have, so Sunday, October seventeenth, um, there was thirty two people and that was a food truck. Event or thirty two instances. And then Saturday, October thirtieth, there were thirty. Now. I had these food truck events written in my calendar. So if they had canceled and I didn't scratch them out of my calendar, I don't know. This is not super. You know, reflective of exact dates. I, I don't track the time, but that's what I have.
Right. Okay, but I, thank you very much. Great discussion. Very important discussion. I let it go long. We're, we're running behind time now. My takeaway from here is that there's consensus for us to. Put this on the March town council agenda. Which means we'll have time in February to talk about this further at our next working session. And we should also coordinate, um. The drafting of an article, uh, about an early pool opening. I don't know, Debbie, do you want to?
Come on. I, I can, I can, I can do it.
And, and I'm happy to help. And we still have a lot of good data, which will be interesting to present to the town.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put something together and send it to you and then maybe you can, um, jump into it and, and clean it up if it's not good enough. Thanks.
Oh, I'm sure it'll be good. Thank you. Okay. Next topic, tree replanting ordinance, PNRC recommendation. Um, I'm not sure who's saying this. This Matt or is this Robin?
I think Robin could take this one.
Right, yeah. So this is about the third time that, or fourth time, we've been looking at the cemented language and. It's to finally resolve the, uh. Language that goes right at the end when. We decide, when Matt has to decide whether this is a. Permit request that can be decided by the mayor and my Matt, or whether it goes to council. The prior language. Had it as number of trees separate. So one or two trees going down, then the mayor, uh, it's a mayor's decision or Matt's decision. Three or more trees than its council's decision. The problem with that language is that we've got some very large trees, single trees. Are then not considered by the council or only considered by the mayor. What is vital there is that the neighbors don't get to comment. When it is, uh, the mayor, um, uh, and, and Matt doing it. So. Bringing it to council allows the neighbors to comment. So new language proposed with the help of PNRC is that it's. In the sum of the width of the diameter of its tree measured at four and a half feet, uh, is less than twenty four inches. Um, and no single tree is, has a greater width than twelve inches than it's Matt and the mayor's decision. Otherwise it is a council's decision. And that captures much better, uh, the, the issue over large trees, um. Going down and allowing neighbors to comment. So that, that, that is the change since the prior version that saw, and that's what is now, um, being proposed.
Thank you, Robin. Like, I think there's some. It's, it's a very sensible and elegant approach, looking at the, the sum of the trees. Can we go to, uh. We'll flip the order around again. Uh, Shannon, do you have any thoughts or comments on the ordinance?
No. No, thank you.
Okay, um, Debbie?
Oh, the only thought I had was it'd be easier to live in an apartment building. So, uh, I thought, I actually found it a little, it's cumbersome. It's a lot, you know, should I go outside with my tape measure and measure my, the trunk of my tree? I don't know. I just, um, it's cumbersome and, uh, and maybe I just can't appreciate it, but I'll go with it, you know, uh. I think greater minds have thought this through than me.
Thank you.
I didn't need to do that.
No questions from me.
Okay, thank you very much, Kabir. And I think that's it. Okay, so.
Um, can I, can I just, I just, I'm sorry. I know, I know we're being conscious of time. I just wanted to make one, one quick point to just to add to Robin's. That one element of, and one difference between an administrative permit versus going to the council. Is that there's no, there's no way to compel replanting when it's administrative. So to Robin's point. If there's a really big, large tree and we all know the value of trees, especially grown mature trees. There's no way that the town compels somebody to replant something. If they take out one really large mature tree now versus now it would go before the council. Who might put in place, um, you know, replanting plan as a contingency for it.
And council member Bard, a thought just occurred to me, should we? Include a standard for where the trunk is measured, you know, maybe.
It's in there at four and a half feet. It is there.
Um, well, that's.
Above average ground level.
That's the crest height. Oh, I, I thought the new standard, the twelve inch would be measured at the ground level at the trunk.
No, it's, it's, both of them should be measured at four and a half feet.
Okay.
Right, so there's no change there.
Okay.
Okay, so, so then we will proceed with voting on this ordinance. Next month.
Didn't.
We, we introduced it already.
I thought we did.
So we would have to vote on it with the amendment.
Okay, so remember. Remember my suggestion, uh, at the last council meeting? Or was it the work session? That it's important that the amendment. Be, uh, wide, widely, uh, distributed in case anybody has a comment on it. Because I think the town attorney pointed out that it was, it was a substantial change. Is that correct?
Actually.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I, I would recommend that there be a motion to reintroduce the ordinance tonight as amended. And then.
And then widely publicize it between now and.
Yeah, actually, I mean, I did in the article that I submitted for the journal, Jeffrey, you saw it, to. Um, mention that an amendment was going to be introduced, uh, along the lines that I've just described. I didn't keep it exciting.
Right, I know, but I, I, I understand that, but, um. It's.
Let's follow Ron's advice.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I understand that. But I, but I'm not sure that the. I don't know how specific what you wrote was or that it was, you know, it was, it's buried in there. So I, I, I think it'd be better in terms of, um. Being open about things that we.
Okay, well, I'll introduce the, reintroduce the amendment to the chapter one eighty two, isn't it? Um. To revise the tree ordinance, um. And. Amend it to flight its, its. Point nine bullet at the end, um. Of the ordinance, um. To change the criteria for deciding between the mayor's review and council review. To be based on the width of the diameter of the trees, um, rather than on the number of the trees and. That second.
Yep.
Sufficient for the introduction.
Yep. Thank you.
So then you, then you vote on all those in favor. All those in favor, okay.
So can I just, can I just read that real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
So I, I just, I just typed it up. So it will now say. The mayor shall examine all applications for permits involving the removal of one or more trees with a combined. Total diameter of twenty four inches or less as measured four and one half feet above the average surrounding ground level. Or where no single, and I'm sorry, and where no single tree proposed for removal has a diameter greater than twelve inches. As measured four and one half feet. I'm sorry.
I, I just said at that height. Don't repeat four and a half feet. Just say at that height.
At that height. Got you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Um, and I think I got a note from the mayor that we're going to, uh. What was the top, is this next up you want to skip to get us back?
Given, given that, given that the, the next four items are times of the essence. Uh, I would propose, Mr. President, that we, um. Move that agenda item to next month's, um, work session.
Okay.
Because it wasn't an item, it wasn't an item that's ready to, um. Be put on the. February agenda anyway, and those other four items are timely.
Okay, COVID test distribution, is this for Matt to given?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be very quick. I had a really great conversation today with Janico, who's the manager for, um. Chevy Chase View and she really. I, I was sort of agnostic for, for some of the reasons that I think we've discussed before as to whether or not we should participate in this, but, um. I think especially given that a couple of council members have, uh, expressed a willingness to volunteer for an hour or so that, um. I submit something requesting COVID test distribution for Somerset and, uh. And ninety five masks as is being offered by the county and that we do a two hour distribution, one, one day. From four to six PM some afternoon to allow for. People to come that afternoon and, and folks to, to come home. Um, I think, I think it's an easy service that we can do no problem and, and help, uh, help. Uh, make that available to people in an easy way.
I'll reiterate my support to help on this, so.
We'll just do it outside at the town hall and, um, people pick it up outside. We don't even have to worry about people gathering inside. Um, I think logistically it's very easy to put together.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Debbie.
When were you thinking, Matt?
I don't know exactly when they'll be able to distribute it to us. I'm guessing someday next week. Um, so I, I'll reach out to Dr. Stotter. Um, and hopefully he'll get back to me within twenty four hours and I'll be able to. Put an announcement out on Friday and, um, for next week at some point.
He said that their, their test situation is being a bit slowed down because of a large Department of Defense contract that's eating up a lot of the tests.
Yeah, yeah.
Please count me in too. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I volunteered as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Do we need to have a formal vote on this or do we just sort of agree we have consensus?
You don't need a motion.
Yeah, there's no money involved, actually.
Right, okay.
I approve Robin's use of his time.
I come for you these days.
The, the, the next item is, uh. And I have a personal interest. To me, road salt, it's really sidewalk salt. Um. That's a concern to, uh, many residents who have dogs in particular in Somerset. If there's. If the salt that the town uses is put down the sidewalks. What I was, what I wanted to discuss briefly is just sort of to get this issue out here for all of us to think about. My recommendation would be that we, um. Ask the town's environment committee to explore the issue and make some recommendations on. Just recommendations. You know, I could see the recommendations could range from. Other substances that we put down on the sidewalks or maybe. Rules or process changes where we use shovels instead of putting anything down if it's less than one inch of snow. I don't really know the answers, but I, I'd like to turn it over to the environment committee. And with that, I'll, I'll go around.
Also, could I, may I also point out in terms of informing the council is. I, I hope you all, uh, noticed in the news that Mayor Bowser, um, has changed the, um. The policy in the district for the brine and whatever it is. And, and Matt knows a lot about this. So I think that this is probably the trend and I also talked to the committee chair and I'm sure. And, and I know that they'll be excited to, uh, do the research here and make a recommendation. But this is also something that can be, um. Discussed when the, when the, I, I don't know how long, i- is the snow removal contract up? At the end of this year, Matt, and, and then when we do an RFP. Using our new procurement policy, that could be, that could be put in. But anyway, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep, no, no, thank you. Thank you for the comments. Um, Kabir?
Yeah, thanks, uh, and thanks, Jeffrey, for that. I didn't know about the district, uh, changing the rule. I think it sounds great and. Um, I might suggest that we, we could put it part of our budget process. Just make sure that we have a sense of. What it would mean to shift to it and then we just make it part of our budget approval. Process.
And that's, that's a great point, Kabir, because I think the, you know, the one thing is that the brine does. It, it, it requires a new piece of equipment, so it, it probably will cost a little bit more. So, um, rather than wait until. You know, May or June, when we go out to bid, it, it behooves me and us to. Have a sense of what, if any added cost it would be to move to that when we're having budget talks.
Great, great, great thought. Is this, I see there, Debbie? What are your thoughts?
No, I, I think this is, is, is the way to go. It's, it's a long time in coming. And, um, I'd like to see us hop on the bandwagon to do the right environmental thing for dogs, us, everybody. So sending it off to the, um. So sending it off to the um, environment committee is a great idea.
Okay, uh, Shannon?
Agreed.
Thank you, you're you're very succinct. Okay, uh, Robin?
The environment committee actually has already submitted a recommendation about half an hour ago. It was um no, it was it was a bit before five o'clock, which is very much along the lines of what you're looking for, Steve, in fact. Uh, and Dave has an article in the journal on that topic, Dave Keith, and that is
But did they, but did they have a, did they have a committee meeting to discuss it?
Mm-hmm. It was, yeah, the last
Sixth.
Yes, yes.
Oh, excellent.
So that's what I was saying, we can just make it part of our budget process.
Right. And I mean, I'm not sure we, we need a council resolution, given that we got a procurement policy, because procurement policy pretty much covers it with a sustainable language, so.
Right. Right, so we might not need much else, and I'll look forward to, I I guess we'll discuss the environment committee's recommendation at the next council meeting, I mean, the next work session. Thank you very much. Okay, we're almost back on track. Camp Somerset, this is from the mayor or the manager?
Yeah, um let's see, uh, oh, I apologize, I didn't actually send that to you, um, but um Greg Matway, who's the director of Camp Somerset, which is Camp Somerset, I think everybody here is familiar with it.
Oh, yes.
They are, basically, he was reached, he reached out to request that they be able to use our tennis courts and our pool as they've done. I think the last, at least last year, if not the last two years because of COVID, I think they didn't use the pool, but prior to that, they've used our pool for certain hours and and tennis courts for um, certain hours and basically requesting that um, they are not requesting to use the town uh, town hall area again this year, so they'll be back at the elementary school. Um, so basically just asking that the council approve of um Camp Somerset, and they usually pay a nominal fee to us that's based on non-Sumerset residents using our facilities.
So, so there's don't we have the um, town attorney review the, I mean, the point tonight is to authorize the town attorney to review the contract and to decide when it's going to be on the on the um at the council, which council meeting, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, if we, if we just, if the council, you know, gives approval tonight to move ahead with um you know, contract negotiation with them, which should be short and easy to then bring for you for final approval.
Take a look at the other issue that we discussed today, but we don't need to mention here. And I will sign off, so I can join my other meeting.
I run.
Thanks.
Matt and Steve, when do we need to get back to them by?
Um I think I think probably March is fine, um
As in get back to them by March or?
Yeah, if we, if we, if if we approve, you know, if we were to approve the contract at the March meeting, I think that that, that would be fine.
I just sent my, on my email to sign up for Camp Somerset for my daughter, and they are starting signups like next week, I think.
Yeah, summer camp signups in this area unfortunately start in January.
So maybe I So maybe I'll touch base with Ron to try to get it all figured out by, I mean, we have, even though it's the twentieth, we have the Mar, the February meeting is late in the month, so we have two weeks, so I
Do we even need it to be at a hearing? Can we make a call today and move on?
Can I just ask? What's, what's the nominal fee they pay to take the kids swimming?
We, we can't make, we can't make a call. It has to be, the contract has to be approved by the council.
Uh Let's see, I can try to look that up quickly. I, it's
Is it a guest? I, like, I remember seeing it on that budget sheet that was sent out a couple thousand dollars. I think it was eight thousand dollars.
Oh, altogether, yeah, altogether, it's several thousand dollars. I want to say it's, you know, eight, it's like eight dollars per day, per, per kid that uses that for non-Sumerset residents that use the pool and the tennis court.
That's fair.
Well, I I think uh, Councilmember Kumar's question is important because it would, and now Ron is gone, but it would seem to me that it's important, it's probably important to them that this be approved in February so that they can start so that they're guaranteed to go out and start
Yeah.
uh, getting their, their campers. So, so I would sug, it it seems to me there's a consensus. I think before Ron last left, he knows he's gonna prepare this contract and and I think from what I understand, all of you wanted on the February council meeting agenda, correct? Okay, okay. Well, I know there's only two more minutes, and I know you have one more item, Mr. President, but there is another time of the essence issue that I forgot to bring up that Councilmember Heller raised yesterday, which is um, this, uh, I I sent all of you a letter from Phyllis Edelman, who is an active member of the the Coordinating Committee on Friendship Heights about, it's basically regarding an amendment that she's requesting to the Thrive, to the Thrive Plan. And and in my meeting this week, the, as Councilmember Barnes, Councilmember Fritzen meets with the municipalities once a month, and he indicated at that meeting that he plans i- it's not clear when Thrive is going to come up before the council. But Councilmember Fritzen indicated that he's planning to introduce an amendment that uh, meets the request of uh, Phyllis Edelman. So at this point, what I would suggest is we, y- you put it on the agenda for council approval of that letter, or just individually you write to uh the county council in support of that letter. So it's it's up to you all what you want to do.
And and
I want to advocate for signing that letter. Okay, and I I I think we should sign it as a, as a, as a community. And I think you all should read it and then get back to us. But it's, 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 it's in our favor. It's taking River Road. Making it not, what's it called? Again, Jeffrey, um
Corridor.
Growth corridor.
Growth corridor. And that is in our favor.
I think, I think probably let's, let's put it on the council agenda for uh, our February meeting. Um, I mean, what stunned me was an admission by Gwen, what's her name, that they forgot about Ocean Road.
Right, right.
Whoa. When, when will Fritzen propose the amendment? Uh, I mean, can we, can we?
When, when they vote, when they vote.
Okay, so February, our February council meeting is still early enough for us to
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, it's, it it hasn't thrive. As you know, I sent all of you a uh, an email this evening about, or today, about some, some more hearings they're gonna have. So it's doubtful that Thrive is gonna be uh, considered by the county council anytime soon.
It sounds like it's really
But we want, but the, or as Councilmember Heller points out, the earlier, the better that we support this amendment, so that
Let's put it on the agenda. Steve?
Okay, happy to. We'll put it, add it to the agenda. Last item on the agenda for tonight is setting dates for our budget work sessions. These will be additional meetings that we need to hold. I think historically, it's been like three sessions. Is that about right?
Usually it's two, two, three if we need it, but okay, so we might need three because we have a new council, this is their first time, and you know, we go over the budget as Councilmember Bar knows, line by line.
Yes, and and we're going to be dealing with the the ARPA fund inclusion in our budget. So, yeah, I think you should plan on three sessions. If we don't need them all, that's great. What, what timeframe are you looking at, uh, Mr. Mayor? In in February and March?
I wonder, I wonder if we should um, find out from the committee and and have Matt uh, schedule this offline, you know?
Okay, that's right.
What do you all think?
That's fine.
I can do that. And and it it is usually in, starting mid, uh, early to mid-March is usually when we start to kick those off. So
Okay.
I think the idea, the idea being we, we have enough meetings ahead of the April council meeting when the budget is introduced.
And and, you know, given that this year, you know, we scheduled all the meetings for the year, I I mean, all the work sessions, we wanted also the council to have the benefit of knowing this, this schedule way in advance. So Matt will work on this almost immediately.
Right, I mean, the other, the other thing we've got to do, and Matt, I imagine you're going to do this, is get the input from the committee chair, so we know what we're looking at when we're planning these budgets.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great meeting, folks.
Thank you.
We did it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Again, congratulations to Councilwoman Roavak. I think she gets special kudos.
It was great today.
One last thing, could we can put on the agenda a motion of appreciation to the Equity and Inclusion and History and Archives Committee for their outstanding event on January the eighteenth? Council.
Okay, why do you, why did you draft it?
Sure.
Yes, but I think that's a great idea, Robin, great idea. And we can, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for the council meeting in February.
Okay.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye.
Take care, everybody. Good meeting.